Call to order, the February 20th, 2024, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Good evening. Gene, could you take role, please?
Sean, come on in.
Here.
I am here.
Hi.
Here.
All right, we know Chris is not able to make it tonight, and we do expect Mr. Simons at some point.
Yes.
Okay. Can, so 189 Willow Street, have they requested a continuance until March 12th? Or have we already continued until March 12th?
We've already continued.
It says already continued until March 12th, so we don't have anything to do there. Could we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 6th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's approved. Can we do the citizen petition warrant article now? Do we need James?
I think he thought it was coming after the mark.
Which I would expect it to. Okay. Well, then, why don't we do... All four of us can vote if necessary on 350, and John can vote if he, when he arrives. Okay. 350 Winthrop Avenue, DSM Realty, application for site plan review, special permit modification under section 195.8.17, revisions approved, site plans in 195.10.7, special permits of the North Andover zoning bylaw to form both building and site improvements in North Andover Mall. Redevelopment consists of renovating the existing Kohl's tenant space to accommodate location of Market Basket, vacated Market Basket tenant space will be renovated to accommodate Kohl's and approximately 17,600 square feet specialty retail shops. Additional improvements include parking lot upgrades, improved traffic circulation, increased landscape area, upgrade to existing stormwater management system, site lighting improvements, properties located in the B3, B4, and R4 zoning districts. All right.
Stormwater pair reviews complete, the fire department's comments have all been addressed. At the February 14th, so last Wednesday's Conservation Commission meeting, there was a request for some additional plan updates. They included replacing the four-foot-high chain link fence located to the southern property line with an eight-foot high. It will be replaced with a black vinyl coated chain link fence, and the intent is to just help mitigate any trash flowing into those sweatlands. A couple of catch spaces to the rear of the site have been converted to drain manholes, and slope stabilization detail has been added, which addresses existing erosion that's occurring between Red Flag, A72, and A76. Fairly minor changes. Revised plans to address those requests, worse of it today, and are included in the packet, and a draft decision has been prepared for review.
Okay. So there are no remaining outstanding items, correct?
No, the Conservation Commission has just indicated they would like to know where you stand prior to a cover of the project.
Okay. Do we have a condition that they'll get any conservation permits that are needed?
All of them stated.
Okay. All right, and we'll get into there a couple of things I think I do want to address in the decision, some, just some cleanups and some, a couple of additions, but, okay, why don't we?
So I would guess, I guess, to ask the options, if I can, for my voting.
Oh, well, I'm sure it's up to them, so. I mean, it is what it is. So, we'll talk about it, we'll talk, we'll talk about where we stand before we do it, just to make sure. Okay, so why don't we do applicant, is there anything else you want to add before we close the public hearing? We're, so what we're going to do now is, if you want to add anything, you can. If there's any additional public comment, we'll take that. If there are additional comments that the board wants to make before we close the hearing, we can do that. We can talk about conditions and things like that, and then we can go into the draft decision. So that's the plan.
Yes, for the record, my name is Brian Dutton with Dajie O'Connell and Associates, project manager for the project, and at this time, we have no further comments to add to the project. I think Gene summarized the miscellaneous plan revisions that came out of last Wednesday evening's Conservation Commission meeting.
Okay. I will note, we did receive a comment from Walk Bike Andover, which has been added to the packet, commenting about our comments from the last meeting, and so we appreciate them watching and contributing, and that has been added to the record and has been reviewed by members of the board. Any other public comment at this time? Nope? Okay, great. Any other board comments? Gemma? Nope? Peter?
I did drive behind the Kohl's in Market Basket, and just some observations for the rest of the board. First, there was really good signage on the south end entrance noting the hours of operation, and it looked like new signage. I don't know if it is. However, there's no signs at all on the opposite end, and I think probably the traffic is supposed to enter from the southern end, but there's nothing stopping traffic coming in from the other end, and there's no signage at all, so. But a nice job with the signage on the south end. Also, when I drove behind the Kohl's where the focus of the discussion was about the noise, proximity to the neighbors up on the hill, it is a hill, but it was not as I perceived as it was described in the prior meetings. There is a slope, there is a hill, but it's, it's not so severe that a wall couldn't be built there, and it wouldn't have to be a very high wall, or as an alternative, a wall could be put up on the rear of the neighbor's property, which would be an even smaller wall. And I'm just mentioning all this because if the mitigations with respect to sound mitigation at the site and hours of operation don't work, I think we talked about putting a lookback, and if those mitigations don't work, then I would hope that our conditions would allow for other remedies which, if the mitigations don't work, could involve a wall. And just driving back there, just driving back there, it did not look as insurmountable as perhaps it had been portrayed.
Sean?
Peter, maybe building up your comment, I would expect a flow of traffic behind the building. You know, and I think we're going to touch upon this as part of the decision, but in condition 24, we're only measuring one corner in essentially inbound traffic. I guess my question is, is that given that there is a potential of having traffic coming the other way, why aren't we measuring the other corner as well?
Yeah.
It's an exit only at that end, that end of the mall is exit only.
It's not marked that way. When you go to that end of the mall, there's no sign that says, "Don't enter," no sign that says, "Exit only," no sign for hours, nothing. I mean, there's signs for the bank.
There's no, "Do not enter" if they're coming up for 114.
Didn't see it. I mean, maybe I missed it, but I, I saw the signs on the far end, they were pretty well done. I didn't see anything, and I don't know how it can say, "Don't enter," if the bank traffic is entering.
From 114, coming from Lawrence, you can't take a left at the, at the exit.
I'm not talking about that entrance. I'm talking about going behind the buildings. The fire road.
Yep.
There's signage on the south end, only, you know, certain hours. On the north end, by the bank, the fire road going behind, there's no signage that says, "Don't enter," or only these hours. Yeah, not, not from 114.
Yeah. I guess my question is, is that like, I mean, is there, I guess, would the applicant be opposed to having to measure both entrance and exits to make sure the flow of traffic is correct?
I think if we don't, we're not going to really know the flow of traffic.
Yeah, exactly.
Jim Lamp, with LTD, representing Market Basket. If you noted on that, excuse me, on that north side, there's a gate there, that's typically closed. I'm looking at Google Earth right now, but it's opened on that picture, but that should be closed, and I'll, I'll talk to them. I believe that the traffic's restricted to the south end of the building, and I'll find out why that gate's open at the time.
Yeah, there was nothing, I appreciate the comments, but actually, I, I saw a gate, but the gate I saw was in, in the back by Kohl's. Is that the gate you're referring to, or are you saying?
It's right off the corner of the bank.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, there's a, there's a crash gate there that's typically closed, no traffic.
Well, didn't see it, and.
There's supposed to enter on that side.
Don't really understand how that works if our discussion at the last meeting, you were offering that there couldn't be any gates back there because it's a fire road.
There's a gate on one side, there's access. Basically, you can get around the entire building, you would have to stop at that gate and go around to the other side. I'll look into why that gate is open currently.
Well, I think there'd have to be some type of assurance that, given the fact that it's not closed, how can it reliably be kept closed?
I just told you I will go and find out, but that gate has been closed historically, to my knowledge. That gate's typically closed. I don't know why it's open. I'm looking at Google Earth right now, and it's there, but it's open at the, at the time of this photo.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I appreciate what you're saying you'll do, that's great. There is some skepticism on my part because the hours of operation were supposed to be a certain amount, and they were not for a long time. You have rectified that, so thank you, but if, if that fell through for a long time, that's why I'm asking for, other than you checking now, what will be in place to keep the gate closed when you're no longer checking?
I believe the way the conditions of approval are, that we have to, over at least a two-year period of time, we have to film, which we're adding cameras to watch this.
So do you have any objection to adding a camera to the other back corner of the building that people refer to?
They're looking into that. What they're, they're trying to do is, because we're not doing work on all the other buildings, they're putting a camera on the end of the loading dock on the far south side for Market Basket, that will go all the way down the back of the building, so anybody entering from that side. There's three or four cameras on the back, there's going to be three or four cameras on the front that we do not have currently, that are proposed as a part of this. Typically, we take three of the light poles in front of our store, and we put cameras on top of those, and they're running 24/7. We can put fixed conditions, what we're going to do is put a fixed position on it during those periods where we have to regulate or look at it during the seven, nine to seven period to make sure no one's entering.
So what about a camera that would cover that northern entrance, just so that we have some assurance that, oh, the gate, we can see it's still closed?
Yeah, these cameras are, it's, they're actually incredible, it's, it's a little creepy, but they can zoom all the way into that corner, and we'll be able to get license plates, we'll be able to figure out what the trucks are, if there are trucks violating.
As long as you have the right angle.
Yeah, and we can fix them, we can fix them to a set location during those times that we have to do that.
Just modify the condition.
Great, okay. Just, so, yeah, let's, we don't, I don't think we need to modify the condition about where the camera is, but just that it will be able to.
To see that end.
To see all, see both ends of the complex in order to be able to see traffic coming in and out at any gates. Okay, that's fine. Sean, any other comments?
Nope.
All right, so, couple of comments and a couple of points about the decision. So, we are going to put some lookbacks, but I just want to just be clear on what those do, what they don't do, and what else. So the lookbacks are, so we're going to have it for when, you know, are the rules being followed? We're going to have a lookback for noise, so that we have to do decibel testing for a period of time.
Are you talking about 24 here, just so that I'm following what your comments are?
Well, this is, yeah, this is 24, 26, 27. Those are all, those all have lookback periods. So, that just means that for a period of time, we're going to have, we're going to actually test that these procedures are being followed and that our conditions are being met. So that's in there because in the past, we had conditions, and there was no real way to test them. So this will be ways to test to make sure that things are being done right. But it doesn't mean that, once these are done, that that ends our ability to enforce the permit. So if, for the next, if two years after, you know, the, it's built and everyone follows the rules, great, and we get all those reports and they're all good, that's fantastic. Another two years goes by, that doesn't mean that, all of a sudden, that there's not our ability to enforce the permit. We still can enforce the permit, we would just need someone to, you know, let us know that there's a problem, and then we can bring it back in and address any conditions. So, it's an added measure, but it's not the only measure. It just doesn't mean that after that two years, we wash our hands of it. Okay, so I just wanted to be clear on that. I would like to put something in, and I'm not sure, I guess this is for the board, for Gene, for people, I'd like to put something in, not sure if it's a finding or fact or a condition, that we are relying on the assurances and the changes that have been, the assurances that have been made, that there have been discussions with Market Basket, that everyone now is aware of the timing conditions, and that there have been improvements since this has gone on, and because of that, we are putting in what we feel are the least restrictive conditions. But should there be issues that arise in the future, we can look, as Peter mentioned, to increase the conditions as needed to make sure that there is compliance with the permit, and that we have discussed additional screening, we've discussed installing a wall, I mean, I even thought about there could be a wall on the, a Butters property if they wanted. There, there are ways that we could go about increasing conditions to make sure that, that this is complied with, but I don't think we need to get to any of those, and hopefully we never do, but I at least want to put in somewhere that we've considered those, and as a fallback, could go back to them if the conditions aren't met. I'm just not sure if that should be a finding of fact, if that should be a general, if there should be a general condition that there'll be appropriate screening for noise and light, just as a general condition, and then leave the specific conditions that we've applied. But I would like to note that we've considered and discussed, so maybe a finding of fact, that we've considered and discussed more significant restrictions, but at this time, we're not imposing them because we don't feel that they're needed at this time.
Well, because we have assurance.
Right. So, if we could try to work, I'd like to work that into a finding of fact, if that's, that we've, that there's been increased communication, which is great, there's been between Butters and the applicants, that there's been communication to the app, to, to vendors and drivers about the hours, and that there has been improvement since we started this process, and because of those things, we're trying to use the least restrictive measures that we have. And then I'd like, but, and then I'd like as a condition that, as a general condition that appropriate screening for noise and light and nuisance will be maintained, and that should, and that the hours shall be maintained as discussed, and that should they not, then the board may consider further conditions.
Works for me.
Yep.
Okay, does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll add those. Was there anything applicants in the decision as drafted that you saw or had an issue with? No? Okay, all right. Is everyone comfortable voting on this now as amended?
Yep.
Yes, okay. Very good. So could we get a motion to close the public hearing as to 350 Winthrop Avenue?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
I'll move.
Motion made, seconded. Okay. Can we get a motion to approve the site plan review special permit, 350 Winthrop Avenue, as amended?
So moved and as amended.
As amended.
Second as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that is a approved, four to nothing. All right? That is approved. Follow up with Gene? You guys, everyone has everyone's contact information, you have Gene's contact information, you know where to find us if needed. Hopefully, we don't see you.
Thank you.
Unless you want to come back for additional meetings.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Do we, do we have Mr. Warden, or do you want to jump into communities?
He's not here.
Okay.
He said he was coming.
Okay, well, let's jump into communities then, maybe he thought we would be longer. That's fine. Okay, so let's jump into MBTA, new public hearings. I feel like I have to read some like special thing for the new public hearings, but I don't have to read it anymore. Okay, so we have a new public hearing, this is for the annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendment articles. We have two, we have the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Housing Overlay District, MBTA Communities Multi-Family Housing Overlay District zoning map amendment. We have been discussing these for a while, but this is the opening of the public hearing, which requires the evidence about the public, about what this article is to be presented. So we're going to go through a somewhat, somewhat more, I don't know, lengthy discussion or presentation, just so that everyone, both, both the board, members of the public who are watching at home, who are going to watch in the future, have, know exactly what we're talking about. So let's do that.
Okay, so these articles are in the same draft form that you reviewed previously. The bylaw's been sent to the state for their pre-adoption review on January 4th. On February 2nd, they confirmed that our application was complete and the review was beginning. They've indicated that their review will be complete, completed within 90 days of submittal. I've requested a legal.
Gene, that's the state's review?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And is that, that's before our warrant needs to be submitted, hopefully?
We hope, that's what we hope for. So, like I said, it's within 90 days, so this process is running concurrent to their review.
Right. Okay.
I've requested a legal opinion from Town Council as to the required quantum of vote, and that would be whether it's simple majority or two-thirds. She thought she might have something for tonight, but she doesn't, so hopefully for the next meeting, we'll have a legal opinion for that. And the one open item remaining in the draft bylaw is regarding parking requirements for restaurant uses. In the packet, we included some surrounding communities, and how they account for parking is very different than how we account for parking for restaurant use. We're really stringent at 15 spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area for both restaurants sit-down and fast food. In my opinion, really, really burdensome, so I wanted to take this opportunity to maybe introduce a new requirement. I shared my thoughts with Aton, so he does have them, but several surrounding communities approach it much different than us. So hopefully, tonight, we'll get some feedback on that.
So, just on the quantum of vote, I mean, generally, the housing choice allows for mult, if it's allowing for multifamily by right, it would be a 50%.
It's the co-mingling of all the other commercial uses that we have.
Whether anything kicks that out of it.
Is, is of concern, and so we hope to get the legal opinion.
Okay.
I'm not so sure that the state's pre-adoption review is going to come back and weigh in on quantum of vote.
Okay.
I think they'll point us to Town Council as well.
Okay. All right, sorry.
So we have Andrew Shapiro and Kayla here from MVPC again. Ian Burns couldn't make it today, but we have Kayla.
I'm not listening to this then.
And so, last week, on Thursday, we actually did a public forum, the same group, where we presented really just how we started, the progress we've went, the suggested districts in North Andover, and so we took that same presentation and summarized it a bit, took out some of the filler slides, and we just hope to kind of walk you through that. It'll be, it may seem very repetitive for you, you've seen this information a number of times now, but like you said, for the public benefit, I think it's important to kind of go through what, what has been presented to date.
Okay, great, let's do it.
Let my, my friend here from MVPC kick it off, or let's go right ahead, Kayla.
Hi, everyone, my name is Kayla Renney, I work for the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. We are a public agency that is tasked with supporting the 15 towns and cities in our region, so everywhere from kind of Lawrence and Andover, all the way up the coast. We do help with various planning efforts across the valley. This includes things such as zoning and housing development, as we're talking about here. We also do provide additional services such as GAS mapping, economic development assistance, transportation planning, and other services. Something important to note here is that we did not write this legislation, this is something that came down from the state. Our role here as a regional planning agency is really to help address options for compliance for our communities, and really help, you know, the voters of the towns make this decision when it comes to town meeting. So a little bit of background on the MBTA Communities Law, this was passed by the state legislature back in 2021. This applies to all towns and cities that have either commuter rail stop, or they are adjacent to a community that has a commuter rail or transit stop. And the goal of the original legislation was to really try to address Massachusetts housing crisis, as we're seeing across the board, you know, home prices are going up, rent prices are going up. So the aim here was to increase zoning opportunities for future housing development. Something to really focus on here is that this is requiring communities to. Something to really focus on here is that this is requiring communities to create zoning. This is not requiring communities to produce a certain amount of housing. So when we're looking at sites, when we're talking about this, really, we're talking about that kind of overall zoning and what could theoretically be on a site. We're not talking about what's currently there, or what could be built there eventually. We're talking about just the zoning aspect of it.
But to be clear, this is a state law, so passed by the legislature, signed by the previous governor, that says towns such as ours have to have such a zoning district. Now, it's up to us to create the zoning district where it is, what the, let's say, what the regulations are to an extent. I mean, we, we have some leeway, but we have to create a zoning district. It has to be of a certain size, it has to allow for multifamily housing by right and of a certain amount, correct?
And if I could just interject for a second, Mr. Chair, and just for the record, Andrew Shapiro, Director of Community and Economic Development, I, you know, we had this meeting last week, the public forum that we did online, one question was, hey, where are our state legislators on this, you know, like, what are they doing? And I wanted to clarify to the person asking that question, you know, I don't exactly know how every one of our state reps voted on this, so it would have been Rep. Minicucci at the time, Rep. Nguyen, and Senator Tar. But to be clear, the state legislature passed this law, and it was signed by the previous administration, the previous governor. So this was a vote that had to go through a legislative process, it was vetted at that level, the state level, and it was ultimately signed by the governor. So there was a say by state legislators in this process.
But in creating such zoning, we don't have a choice, we have to create a zoning district.
We have to, and if we don't, there are consequences to not doing it. And I believe there's a slide that addresses this, and if it's not, we can speak to it.
That's fine, but just, I think, I just want people to know that although, you know, we can have our own beliefs about the values of this, right? For me personally, I think more multifamily housing in town by right is a good thing, right? For that, right? But I don't know that I would have specifically taken this particular approach, these types of numbers, these specific locations necessarily, if we were just like as a planning board saying, hey, we want to come up with some zoning districts, right? We may have tackled downtown zoning first, or there may have been other pressing issues, but we didn't have, we have to do this, so we're kind of making the best arrangements that we can, and suggesting the best zones that we think, based on what we, the requirements that we have from the state.
And if I could just add, not at the most recent public meeting, but the prior one, I also raised the point that, at least for me, it would have been better if the state legislation had offered some type of credit or measure for those towns that have been building multifamily houses already, which North Andover has done, in my view, extensively. And it's, it's as if it has no bearing on how this state law was written. And, and I think in the long term, that hurts the overall effort, because the message it sends to all the communities is, you know, you're, you're better off waiting and doing nothing until there's a mandate. So that's unfortunate for the overall effort.
And just to that point, I would say, I believe we've made that, we've provided that, we certainly provided that feedback for MVPC, and I know that MVPC has been in regular contact with state officials who work on this, these regulations.
Well, if that feedback was given, that, that'd be great.
Unfortunately, that seems to be the state of affairs generally, right? Because we have this MBTA law, we had the Housing Choice Act, which changes the quantum of vote, we have legislation proposed about accessory dwelling units, and it seems to be that there are just enough municipalities that don't do enough, that the state says, listen, I, just, the ones that are doing their job, great, but everyone else, we're going to push along. And it doesn't necessarily seem fair that we get caught up in that, but that does seem to be the trend of how policies are being developed. So, again, just some segueing.
Thank you.
Absolutely. No, thank you for those comments. I think you've brought up things that we've seen across the region in terms of just, you know, thoughts about the state law that came out. I think that, of course, you know, everything in this legislation might not address everything, you know, people wanted to see, there might be some drawbacks that folks see, but I think that at the end of the day, you know, what, what our role is really to do is to try to, you know, work with what the state is requiring, and try to put forward as good of a plan as we could to kind of meet those requirements. Ultimately, of course, it will be up to town voters at town meeting, but the way we look at it is, you know, even though we're required to create a zoning district, the town had a lot of control over, you know, where we're locating it, the dimensional parameters, and we'll get into all that in a little bit, but I do appreciate those comments as well. So talking a little bit about the legislation, just to get into some of those zoning requirements that were just mentioned, so of course, as discussed, this is multifamily housing as of right. Couple other requirements here, that there can't be any age restrictions, and you can't restrict the number of bedrooms, and the zoning must theoretically be able to accommodate that minimum density of 15 units an acre. Something we like to mention as well, you know, we say theoretically here, because again, we're talking about zoning and the potential, we're not talking about the actual construction of units, so just want to highlight that as well. There's also a requirement for communities that have a transit stop, part of their district has to be within a half mile of a station. This does not apply to North Andover because you are an adjacent community, not directly next to a commuter rail station. This is just a snapshot of the rest of the valley, just to give a little bit of context of what is required of North Andover's neighbors. So as you can see over there, the darker green is going to be your commuter rail communities that have that stop. Any of those kind of medium yellow colored communities are going to be your adjacent communities that are next to a commuter rail station community, and then you also have your adjacent small towns, they have some smaller requirements as well. We do have rapid transit communities as well, they're just not on the map, those communities are located a little closer to Boston.
Do you know if any of these surrounding towns, or any of the other towns that you work with, have actually passed a bylaw or ordinance yet?
So off the top of my head, I know Haverhill has submitted their interim compliance, it's a little bit different, just because they don't have to do town meeting, and the other communities that we're working with, we are currently working on bringing them to town meeting this year. That includes Salisbury, Newbury, Rowley, a couple other communities as well. So just a snapshot, we're not working with every single community in our region specifically, but the ones that we are working with, we are in the same process as you all right now, having our public hearings. We actually have about four this week, so.
Andrew, do you know if anyone's taken a vote on, I'm just curious.
There's been no votes.
In the region, no, I don't believe so, not that I'm aware of.
The only one I heard about was Newton, and their city council took an approval.
Yeah, Newton has done it. Lexington has passed theirs, I believe. I don't have a running list of everyone who's passed. Obviously Milton took a pretty now well-known vote where they rejected theirs. So there, there have been some that have come into compliance, and at least one other stated they're not going to comply, at least at this time. So we'll see where that goes. Lexington, interestingly, I mean, look, Lexington, when you think about that community, you know, it's not a dense community, and it's also kind of profiles as, you know, skewing a certain demographic, and so it's interesting that they were very quick to pass their compliance. I think Arlington also passed theirs as well. They're a very dense community that's built a lot of housing over the past few years.
Okay, thanks.
So diving into a little bit more specifically the requirements for North Andover, so as an adjacent community, you do have a minimum land requirement, you are required to zone for 50 acres, and it must, again, theoretically allow for that minimum density of 15 units an acre. The district has to have that unit capacity equal to about 10% of your housing stock, and it also must have reasonable access to a transit station. North Andover, again, is not required to zone necessarily near a commuter rail station because you don't have one in town. However, it's something that we considered when we were looking at locations for districts, is access to other transit stops in the area. So what this means is that you're required to create a zoning district that, again, could theoretically accommodate 1,191 units, and we'll get into kind of what those numbers look like in a second. So looking at what the rest of the Merrimack Valley looks like, we have, again, your commuter rail communities, they have much higher requirements, looking at Haverhill and Lawrence, you know, we're looking at over 4,000 units. Our adjacent small towns have some smaller requirements here, North Andover is kind of sitting right in the middle there as an adjacent community.
Can you go back to that one?
So when we're talking about this 15 units an acre, in theory, we want to show a couple examples of what this actually looks like in town compared to other developments. So a couple small scales, small, sorry, small-scale examples here. We do have 127 Marblehead Street, this is a great example, it's four units on just that .10 acres, so this is actually modeling out to 40 units an acre. So obviously, there's not 40 units that's on that site, but because the site is so small, when we're looking at the actual density of it, that's what that model's out to be. So showing some of these smaller examples, they look like on paper that the density's very high, but it really is just because the sites are so small, but they still very much fit kind of that character that we're looking for in those neighborhoods. Little bit bigger example here, these medium-scale developments, we have 90 Sutton Street, this is at 29 units an acre. We also have a new development here, 149 Main Street, this is modeling at about 38 units an acre here, so good examples of kind of that mid-scale development here in town. And then looking at a couple of these larger examples, these are a few new properties that have been developed recently, so we have, of course, Avalon Bay and Princeton Properties here, modeling out to 18 units per acre and 21 units per acre respectively. So these, of course, are good examples of some of that larger scale development. Something really to highlight here is that all these examples that we've shown so far, they actually exceed the state's requirement for that 15 units an acre. So just something to think about when we're kind of thinking about that context of, you know, what 15 units an acre could look like. These are some examples of a little bit higher density, just to keep in mind.
And can I just interject really quickly on this, I'm going to use my opinion, my personal opinion on this, it's just that I think the biggest takeaway, and I'm just basically rephrasing what Kayla just said, I think one of the biggest takeaways for me, and I think it's important for folks at home to realize, or folks in the audience and you all as the planning board, is the 15 units per acre is a lower density standard than some of the more high-profile, larger developments that we've seen recently. So the 18 units per acre, for instance, is shown at Avalon Bay, or 21 units per acre at Princeton Properties. And then if you go, just can go back to the medium slide, Gene, thank you, sorry. You know, like these, we can't, I can't speak to the 149 Main Street project because it hasn't been constructed yet, but I don't view, or I don't know a lot, if a lot of people view the 90 Sutton Street project as a, you know, an obtrusive development, I think it's a pretty, you know, well-contained site, and that tallies out to 29 units per acre. So just something to keep in mind as we're going through this process and considering that 15 unit per acre density standard, just in context.
All right, so just jumping into a few points that we wanted to make about what kind of control the town has, again, referring back to the point of, you know, this being a state law, and the state is requiring towns to create these zoning districts, but we really want to focus on what parts of the law the town does have control over. So the biggest one being the location of the districts. North Andover actually has a little bit more flexibility than some other communities who might have those requirements to zone near their transit stations. North Andover had a lot of flexibility to be able to look really anywhere in town, still keeping in mind the factors that we'll kind of talk about in a little bit, in terms of, you know, connectedness and access to transportation. But we also did look at different dimensional parameters to make sure that any proposed parameters we're showing fit within the character of the town. That includes things like setbacks, height requirements, parking, open space, and other things. The town's also requiring for future affordability in these potential developments, that's also a component of this as well. And of course, any proposed plan would have to be subject to plan review. This includes things like the stormwater management, traffic circulation, utility capacity, emergency access. Something we really like to highlight as well is the design standards, that's of course something that a lot of communities are really focused on, is, you know, what could it look like? So I think that's something to highlight here as well. And of course, with all developments, they must comply with any sort of environmental laws that they would have to follow, such as wetland protection, things like that. So looking at the timeline here, communities had to start off really submitting an action plan to say that they are working with the state to eventually get into compliance, or they're working towards it. So that includes working with us, trying to create proposed districts for you all, and some of that technical assistance there, but really, the goal is to get to the end of the year, the town must reach compliance by the end of the calendar year, so December of 2024. But truly, the goal is to get to town meeting here, which is coming up very soon in May. So just something to consider with the timeline here, because you do have town meeting, even though you have that December deadline, we're really looking at May in terms of compliance. So what happens if the town does not comply? If the town does not pass this zoning amendment at town meeting, the Attorney General's office has made it clear that this is a state law, and they do want to see towns comply with the state law. There have been a few things that the state has come out with and said you won't be able to get access to in terms of grants if you're not in compliance here. So we do have a list of about 12 state programs that the town would be either ineligible for, or be less competitive for, including grants the town has received previously. As you can see here, the town has accessed over $6 million in funding from these programs in the past. And something to highlight as well is on top of the 12 state programs that they mentioned, the state has also come out with language saying that compliance with MBT communities could be a factor in several other things, other grant applications, any other discretionary funding, if you'd like to.
Yeah, I just want to interject with one thing, just to hammer home the grant issue. So, you know, past grant funding, you know, obviously the 6.2, but just to kind of thinking through some of the projects that we have on our slate, we're looking to do some major projects in our downtown, like downtown streetscape improvements, and we want to complete the path between Main Street and High Street, I think some people know about that, the shared use path that we're working with a consulting firm on. Projects like that, more often than not, do need to be at least partially funded through state funding in many cases, so I'm not saying it always has to be that way, but I just, I can foresee us being reliant on state programs in the future for a lot of some pretty significant projects that we're trying to accomplish.
All right, so I just want to highlight a couple things about the public engagement we've done in North Andover at this point. So as you can see here, this is about the 14th time we have talked about this publicly. I'm sure you all have heard this a few times now, so this kind of.
14 times in North Andover?
Yes, specifically, yep. So starting back in 2022, so of course, this passed, the state law, the state law passed in 2021, but really started talking about this in 2022 when the guidelines were released. Some of these initial conversations were conducted with the planning board here, as well as the select board, to let you all know about the requirements and the guidelines that the state had released. There have been additional public feedback sessions that we've held, including some housing production plan meetings where we've talked about MBT communities, we've had MBTA community-specific forums as well, where the public had an opportunity to not only learn about this, but also provide their comments. We've had a joint meeting with the planning board and select board to initially present these proposed district locations. We've also had a review of the zoning map and talked about some other areas as potential options for the zoning. We've also discussed this at several planning board meetings, either myself or Ian has been here talking with you all. And of course, this is a first public hearing tonight here, so definitely have had a lot of opportunities to talk about this, you know, get feedback from the public.
Now, I was just going to add that bullet number three should really, should be four separate meetings, just including the last virtual one that we just had, so.
I added the February 15th, but I forgot.
Yeah, no, that's totally fine, I just want to make sure people at home know that it's four, that's all.
So a couple factors to discuss here, when we were looking at potential options for your districts, we really wanted to consider a few main things. So first of all, the acreage, we want to be able to make sure that we're reaching that minimum land requirement, so we wanted to look at parcel size. We also did look at these locations- We also did look at these locations in the context of their transit access. And if they had bus lines, for example, if they had MIBA access, that was a big factor in looking at some of these areas. We also wanted to look at areas that had potential opportunity for additional pedestrian access, increasing that connectedness and walkability, as well as access to commercial centers as well. So just a few of those factors there. I'm sure you've heard a lot from me at this point, so I'm going to, I'm going to switch gears here, and I'll let you talk about some of these other areas.
Yeah, and I mean, we can go into as much or as little depth on these as you want. I know we collectively had some of these conversations. The planning board was astute enough to want to widen our search a little bit when we maybe were a little narrower in the beginning. And so I appreciate the feedback from the planning board on that. And it did invite us to look at sites like this, Royal Crest.
Where's that?
Yeah, I know, right? A very little-known site that no one in North, hardly anyone in North Andover is focused, ever focused on. But yeah, it would have been a good site insofar as, look, it's 75 acres. So right there and there, you know, you're getting over your 50 acre requirement. You know, it is currently zoned for lower-density housing, so there's opportunity to redevelop the property as was proposed a few years back. But of course, that was, it famously went down, that proposal, and it would have only netted 676 new units, and we need over 1,200 new units of housing to be zoned for. So I just think from a what the community wants perspective, it just didn't ring as a place that was going to work. Also, it's surrounded by a lot of single-family homes. There's a lot of abutting neighbors that have to be considered in this process. It doesn't really serve as a gateway improvement opportunity, which the other two sites that we did select, I believe, do. And it's not currently directly served by MIBA at this time. So just another factor, as Caleb was mentioning, access to public transit is a factor.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I still think Royal Crest is a great opportunity for redevelopment, but I don't think it meets this particular requirement where this is more, I mean, even though our proposed bylaw does encourage some, some mixed use, it's like, it's limited mixed use, right? That encourages, you know, maybe some first-floor retail with some housing above, where, to me, what we were talking about with Royal Crest was a much larger type of redevelopment, which I think would be more appropriate for that size and type of, and that particular location. So like, I'm glad we looked at it, but I don't think it fits as well with what this is trying to do.
Another site was Eagle Tribune, another compelling site along Route 114. I think the detracting factors about this, it's only about 11 acres, so it doesn't give you a big chunk of your compliant, your compliance requirement of 50 acres. So you really have to get kind of creative with your density requirements. Either you'd have to dense, build pretty densely in this location to maximize the amount of units you could put on the site, or you'd have to accept a lot more units at another site to offset what you weren't creating at this site, to meet your approximately 1,200 unit capacity requirement. It's also surrounded by a little, a lot of single-family homes, and it's a little further up 495, excuse me, 114. So it's not quite as close to 495 as the other two proposed areas are, which I think was a compelling factor in wanting to look at them. We also looked at downtown. You know, I think this, the downtown gets a little more complicated because there's a lot of smaller parcels. You'd have had to do a little bit of mixing and matching and trying to find the exact right fit for how you wanted to kind of attack this issue. And also, we did start a process to rezone the downtown area, and I think we decided to shelve that in the meantime because we wanted to concentrate on this effort for the MBTA community's compliance. But I think the planning board expressed a preference to kind of better tailor an organic process to redeveloping the downtown area, especially around Sutton Street, if that's what we were going to look at in the future. But I know that it is high on the town's priority list to, you know, provide a catalyst to see more activity in the downtown. And I would just say that, you know, more multifamily housing in the downtown area could be a way of doing that. It's a, it's kind of a tried and true way, as a matter of fact, in most other communities. So it's something we should look at in the future, but not necessarily doing it through this mechanism.
Right, and that does, I mean, when we talked about before, that's my feeling is that like, you know, when we talked about the, was it 149 Main Street, the Main and Second, like, that kind of development, I think, is, is perfect for downtown, but that took a lot to get to where it was in terms of the hearings and things like that, and the, you know, it's not, you know, I don't know where it stands in terms of getting done because, you know, financing is complicated, and downtown is just so nuanced, and this state law kind of mandated is more blunt, I would say. This is a more blunt, we're going to require housing, and downtown, I think, needs to be more nuanced. So I look forward to when we get, when we get to it. Hopefully, that's something we can look at next year, but, great.
And then on this slide, we have East the Mills and Princeton, North Andover combined here. I mean, the Mills, you know, 36 acres, which is a fair bit of property, but it's probably the least accessible in terms of proximity to 495 and MIBA transit versus the other sites that we were considering. Very densely surrounded by, you know, a lot of neighborhoods. Obviously, there was a lot of interest during the development of the Amazon project. And because you had the Amazon, excuse me, not Amazon, Avalon, my, my, my Freudian slip there. So the Avalon develop, Avalon development had a lot of interest. And I mean, I think, given that those projects did go forward, you know, there may not be as much tolerance for laying on zoning for more as of right multifamilies. We had to consider that. And it's also not really a gateway improvement opportunity either, or something else we were trying to achieve through some of the other areas that we were looking at. And then Princeton, 14 acres, again, wouldn't have been a big bite of the apple in terms of our required compliance. It's not served by MIBA transit at the moment. We're working on that. We're trying to make that a reality, but it's not currently served by MIBA transit. There is, you know, it's, it's pretty much built out. So it would have been kind of a, I'm going to say it, a little bit of a cynical approach to this process to overlay it across an area that's already been redeveloped.
Well, it also doesn't make sense to, to overlay places where we went through so much time and effort, like the Mills, to do master plan zoning and to do this. Where they could just tear it down in the future and then just build by right, like, what was the point of all the work we did in tailoring how many units could be at, at Avalon and the heights at Princeton and moving things around? And all, all that work was for a purpose, and it seems making things by right, which, again, are, is a good idea in certain places, doesn't make sense when we've already done master planning, to then say, okay, now this can be by right. Like, then why did we just do all that work?
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more, and I, and I respect the process that the planning board and town meeting goes through to make these decisions on how they want to see sites transform in the future. And to that point, you know, the sites that we selected, which we'll go over in a minute and that we've talked about with you all before, are kind of, you know, sites that haven't been reimagined in the, so distant.
And I know we've been told, like, you know, you're in compliance if you have the zoning, but I worry that if enough towns do it in this cynical way that you said, in places that already have housing, whether the state's going to be like, well, you want grant money, or do I give it to the people who actually did it in a place that doesn't have housing, even if it's not built yet, that could be built in the future? I mean, i- is there an unofficial, you know, sanction that you get? So I'd worry about that by doing it, kind of, that, it's kind of seems like cheating.
So just talking about, we talk about compliance, the state created a tool, essentially a large Excel spreadsheet, really so we could plug in some of these dimensional parameters that we've established in the bylaw and see if theoretically, based on kind of perfect conditions, if, you know, what that kind of potential unit capacity could be. And the ultimate goal there, of course, is to make sure that North Andover is complying with both the minimum unit capacity that these districts must have, and also making sure that it meets that minimum 15 units an acre density requirement. So of course, we looked at things like lot size, building height, the floor area ratio, setbacks, parking, all that fun stuff. And the model essentially spits out a number to make sure that we are in compliance.
Do you want to make a second of this, Jean? I don't mind going through this if you. Yeah, okay. We had Jean doing this on the call, and so we're, we're adjusting on the fly. So we looked at, so our first area that we're looking at is North Andover Mall, which we just discussed earlier in the, in this meeting, because they are going through a process to sort of reinvigorate their, their commercial floor plate there. It's on 35 acres along Route 114, good access to 495, close proximity, obviously, to all the businesses and commercial activity along Route 114, as well as going into Lawrence. It's served by MIBA bus route. It connects to Lawrence, North Andover, and Andover. So from a connectivity standpoint and an access standpoint, we think this is a really, really compelling site for this type of rezoning. It's a gateway improvement opportunity. Obviously, when you provide the opportunity for redevelopment to occur, if that redevelopment does indeed incur, and with the design guidelines that were referenced earlier, that are, we're able to hopefully, you know, implement in this bylaw, you all as a planning board have an opportunity to work with that developer that comes in, if they do in fact show up, to, you know, create something that is, you know, attractive to look at as you're coming into North Andover. Not to say that it's not an attractive site as it is, it's not a bad-looking site, but we can always improve, right? And it aligns with master plan strategies. I won't go into everything, but, you know, essentially, the master plan speaks to a lot of, you know, redeveloping existing developed parcels, you're not building on greenfield properties, built, you know, redeveloping on, in areas where you can have adequate access to utilities, redeveloping along your commercial corridors like Route 114, Route 125, you know, providing those gateway improvement opportunities. So a lot of master plan priorities are, are addressed with, you know, potentially redeveloping an area of this site.
But just to be clear, we just, we just did a special permit for a site plan review for Market Basket, where Market Basket and Coles are going to be switching spots within the plaza. And it's my understanding that they have no current interest, desire, or plans to build residential there, right?
Yeah, so I, I'll say this, we did not keep it a secret from the folks from the Market Basket Development Team that we were intending to bring this forward, and they responded with kind of a, I don't want to characterize their response necessarily, but they, they didn't indicate any interest in coming forward with a, a development for housing. And I would just say this, just from a logic standpoint, I don't, I highly doubt they would come forward with the project they're proposing to you if they were going to then turn around and invest a lot more money in something completely different that.
Agreed. So this, I mean, this seems to be more of a, one, we have to do it, but two, this particular area, say, hey, we think this would be a great place for this type of housing. We're going to allow for it, and if it, you know, maybe in the future, we can have some incentives or things like that. But this at least sets a base and says, hey, we'd like to see this, and, you know, it's a discussion we could have, but it's, it's for the future. We're talking five, 10, 15, 20 years down the line, because we know that at least for the next two or two years, they're building all this. So I don't think it's something that they would, you know, that it seems to be for now, but I think that's good to have these. We have a lot that were just developed in terms of housing. We have some other stuff that's, you know, coming on board. So it's nice to have something for down the line as a possibility where we think it might be appropriate, rather than being more controlled by the developers themselves. This allows us to say, hey, this, this would be a good spot, and maybe we could work on it, you know, in the future.
Yeah, I would agree with everything you just said.
The way we look at it is, when it comes to the zoning, it's about creating that opportunity. But really, after that, it's also really up to the market. You know, if a property owner sees that, you know, commercial use is a better fit for their property, that's totally fine.
And, you know, just to segue into that, it's a good segue to Osgood Landing, because on this site, it's a 50-acre site, 58-acre sites located on Route 125, as everyone most likely already knows, but it's already been envisioned as an area that can accommodate new housing. It was a 40R district, and you know what? That never really came to fruition. So that's just a kind of a, that's proof to the idea that zoning is only conceptual. It's, it's there, it's a tool, but then it needs to actually been, be reached out and used by the development community if they want to. And in the case of the 40R at Osgood Landing, it was never really actually used.
My, I mean, again, does the 40R still exist? It does, right? So if we pass this, at Osgood Landing, they could build what they're, you know, the office, what they have now, the office space and the solar. They could do housing already there under the 40R, and now they could also do housing under this. I mean, housing's already allowed there, right?
Yeah, on a portion of the site.
Right. I mean, it, not exactly, exact overlay, but, right, this is, this is a place that are, whereas on the Market Basket site, that doesn't, as I call for housing right now. This is somewhere that already calls for housing, we're just, you could go under a different format with a kind of different setbacks.
The zoning for that was approved back in 2007. So to everyone's point, zoning doesn't necessarily mean construction.
Right.
This is a good example of that.
Okay.
But what make it also, you know, a good, a good site for this, which probably also made it an attractive target for 40R, is that it is close to 495 via Ward Hill. It is close to commercial businesses and employers along Route 125. And obviously, you've got a pretty big employer right behind where this site is now. And I imagine a lot of the folks that are going to be working there over the next few years, they're, they're folks that are looking for a site, for housing. So it could be an opportunity for some synergy between the two sites. It is another gateway improvement opportunity, obviously, since this is a very short distance within North Andover, over the Haverhill Line. And it's a potential for an expanded MIBA bus route, although I want to point out that MIBA, it currently, this site is currently served by MIBA. So they temporarily took away the MIBA service during the construction of the Amazon facility, but they are, they have reinstated it recently to serve that site. And the conversations that we've been having with MIBA is trying to extend its service further down Route 125, and maybe even connecting it by going down Sutton Street and connecting with the Lawrence MBTA station. That would be the, that would be the dream, in my view, to really make it an effective route. And then again, it aligns with a lot of master plan strategies that I outlined earlier, just in terms of it being a developed site that we wouldn't be, wouldn't be a greenfield redevelopment. You know, there are utilities there. We just invested a pretty substantial amount of money to bring sewer down there, so it is connected to existing utilities. And again, you know, this is an area that's been envisioned as, as it could be housing, and the, the town already spoke to that a few years back when rezoned as a 40R.
Okay.
So some of the zoning highlights, and I would, I would, I'm going to invite Jean to fill me in on, because this is much more her core competency than mine, but we're calling for in each of these districts, max building heights of four stories or 55 feet. So the four-story would be allowed in the North Andover Mall District only if the development contains commercial uses on the ground first floor or a parking garage. Otherwise, it would be a three-story, 35-foot height requirement in, and we're, that's specific to the North Andover Mall. Max building lot coverage would be 30%. The, so again, the rest, 70%, has to be occupied by something other than the building or buildings. Minimum open space requirement, 30%. So again, that's another 30% that can only be used for open space, minimum, and a minimum parking space per unit parking requirement of 1.75. And you might be asking yourself, how'd you get to 1.75? Because in North Andover zoning code, there is a per bedroom. I'm not stating it probably well, but it's based on, like, you get a certain amount of parking spaces if it's a two-bedroom, a certain amount of parking spaces if it's a one-bedroom. And this is sort of like an averaging out, right, Jean, of, of that?
So I averaged the Minko Development, Princeton, and Avalon in each of the, and they came to just over 1.6. And so again, conservatively, we've, we've put it at 1.75. Each of those projects, we've not heard of parking concerns.
It says minimum open space. Is that like, like, actual, does parking lot count?
Sidewalks, green area in front of buildings all count?
I could see that being difficult.
It's a defined term.
No, no, I could just see that being difficult in the North Andover Mall. 30% open space.
Well, so you're making a point here, which is that it's difficult, it's going to be difficult to achieve, it's, it's going to be difficult for, it's going to be challenging, in my view, for a lot of developers to come in and say, yeah, we can do the 15 units per acre and do the by-right standard. They're, they may have to come in and ask for something through special permit to go much denser than that.
So it doesn't include the parking areas, the drive lanes, driveways? So it doesn't include the parking areas, the drive lanes, driveways, parking garages? Includes landscaped areas and sidewalks, things like that? Stormwater management facilities, unbuilt areas? Swimming pools, tennis courts, other recreational facilities?
Is that, is that open space thing? Is that our requirement? Like, that's not a state?
No, that's ours.
That's ours.
And it, and it's similar to other bylaws. It's why you're saying.
Okay. It just seems hot, it just seems, seems like it would be difficult for these two lots in particular, but... I'm not sure if that's good or bad, to be honest, so.
And that's across the entire parcel? So it's kind of like first one in gets some benefit, last one in, it, the math all has to add up.
30%.
Across the total parcel size.
Okay.
And then we're, we're capping it at 15 units per acre. So again, that's the minimum requirement from the state, but that's going to be our max. And so, you know, permitted uses, obviously, all the underlying zoning district permitted uses will remain in effect. So this is a good opportunity to remind folks that we're not proposing to eliminate the underlying zoning. We're not looking to take the zoning that we're proposing through this bylaw and replace it, or replace the existing zoning with it. The, the zoning that is underlying will remain. This will be an overlay. So any existing overlay zoning district permitted uses will remain in effect. So that includes like, Chair, you, you mentioned the over, the 40R overlay. So that existing overlay with respect to the Osgood Landing property remains in effect. Permitted uses proposed in the MBTA multifamily overlay district will include, limited to, so this is just a smattering of kind of like, maybe some uses that not everybody has been accustomed to seeing. Art gallery to be allowed in, which is also a current, allowed in currently in both I-2 and B-3, which are the existing zoning areas of Osgood Landing and Market Basket. Brewery, distillery, indoor winery. So that's a newer one right there where, you know, we think this is an interesting use that could be more well-defined. It's something that a lot of downtowns and, you know, kind of busy commercial shopping districts are introducing as sort of an activity or something that people appreciate in a community. It's also an opportunity to, you know, create jobs. It's kind of like a micro-manufacturing sort of operation. So we thought it'd be something compelling. It's something that we talked about a lot when we were starting to redevelop, to develop the downtown zoning. So it's something we carried over into this zoning. Business and other offices would be allowed, eating and drinking establishments, indoor places of amusement, ice skating, things like that. Multifamily dwellings and apartments obviously is, is the, the goal of this overlay district and compliance standard. Research and development, so offices that are geared towards sort of newer technologies, for instance, and, and, you know, target industries as well as retail establishments, which obviously we would love to see a lot of retail establishments on first floors of buildings that would have potentially housing above them.
So I think the important takeaway here is we're not introducing this vast bunch of new uses that people, that aren't considered already in our bylaw today in these semi areas.
Something I just want to highlight real quick as well, especially talking about these permanent uses and thinking about zoning. When we have this list here of all the different uses that could be allowed, you know, unlikely to see an art gallery and an ice rink and a brewery be built in the same site. So it's really helpful to kind of think about that, even though we're allowing multifamily housing along with these other uses, doesn't necessarily mean that all of them or any of them will be utilized. It's just providing, again, these additional opportunities if somebody wanted to build something like that.
And one more issue that I just want to raise that was alluded to at the beginning of the conversation, and Jean had mentioned it, is we have to, one thing we're going to have to work pretty closely on is how this affects the quantum of vote. So the fact that typically, you know, when you're rezoning for uses other than multifamily housing, you know, you would need a two-thirds quantum of vote. And the housing choice legislation, I'm not going to quote it 100% correctly, but it's essentially to the effect of you can't combine a multifamily housing bylaw with another aspect that would require two-thirds of vote in one vote. And so we have to be mindful of that. And so I don't know if our, if the bylaw as, as is currently written would comply with that standard. And look, I don't want to speak for the board. The board has to make its own decision. But I think the goal would be to come in under the housing choice legislation, so enable the bylaw to be considered under a majority vote. And so we would, we're going to have to find a mechanism in order to be able to do that, in order to introduce the commercial uses that we would like to see the district have, these districts have, but also to ensure that we're passing a MBTA communities compliant zoning district. So it's something we're going to take into consideration. So we're going to work closely with the town council. I know she's going to be consulting with the AG's office. And we're also continuing to rely on the good counsel of MBPC. And I just want to say, you know, I should also say this before I get to the next step.
Can you, can you, could, if someone was building, could you build the housing under this bylaw and build commercial under already allowed zoning?
So that would be one thing. I, other than the brewery, distillery, but then...
Right.
So everything else is allowed, right, Jean? Pretty much all the, are all these other uses allowed?
They're allowed where it's pointed out, either by two or...
But usually you have to choose or you go under...
Once you come in, that one applicant, you'd have to file two applications.
Right.
Yeah.
You'd come in under the overlay.
If we took some of the stuff out that's already allowed by zoning, like, yeah, brewery, distillery, winery is great. But if we have to nix that for now, then we nix it for now and add it, you know, later on to, or you could add it to the underlying zoning. And then you could choose to come in with two applications, one under a special permit, one under the byright.
So we just have to, we just have to figure that out. It's a little bit of a puzzle game right now. And I just want to take a moment to recognize the work that Jean has done on building this bylaw because really 98% of it, more or more, is, has been her effort on this. So I really appreciate what she's done in, in working with MBPC and myself and others. And so I don't, I don't think any of this, sorting this out, has anything to do with her efforts on this. I think she's done a great job. And right now, it's just the home stretch of working with our town council, the state AG's office on compliance. And again, as Jean mentioned, we have the bylaw already submitted to the state for interim, like sort of interim review prior to going to town meetings. So we're making sure that we're putting something forward that is compliant with the bylaw, with the regulations.
No doubt. I, I mean, I just think, I think we should pare it down to the most, the simplest that we know is going to work. Right? So if it comes, I mean, these are all great. I don't see anything controversial about any of these. But if there's a question about just even the right quantum approved, whether not, one's better or the other, you know, I think this should be something that we get more than two-thirds on, but I just don't want to vote on the wrong thing and have things messed up procedurally when this is something we need to do. So if we need to pare it back and just leave these as under the current underlying zoning or current, you know, overlays, then we can do that.
And I just, I wouldn't lead to any one conclusion at this point. I just, it's just some, I wanted to raise it to your attention so you understood that that was something, an issue we're contending with, but I'm not going to sit here and decide what the, what the end result's going to be.
I worry that we're not going to get a satisfactory answer. Some lawyers, a lot of lawyers will tell you, maybe. And unfortunately, there may not be a good answer because we may not have great guidance from the state. So there may not be a crisp for sure answer. And if so, I'd just say I'd lean towards being more under-inclusive just to make sure that we get something in place, just for this one.
Peel it all the way back to just multifamily housing. That's the only permitted use.
So let's, I mean, let's, right, let's get as much as we can and if we have to peel it back, peel it back. You know, that's okay. All right. Great.
Yep. And so, you know, next steps, you know, we're just, we're continuing to hear public feedback, your feedback. We're going through our public hearings now with you all in the run-up to town meeting. We do intend to bring forward the bylaw at annual town meeting on May 14th, 2024. Again, as a reminder of the bylaw, we must be in compliance with the regulations by the end of this calendar year. So we're really hoping May 2024 is, is the time, but if things go haywire, I'm not thinking that way right now. But we could always look to maybe another town meeting at some point if we have to do that, if that's in everyone's best interest. That's, that's, that's above my pay grade.
Go on. It's for everyone, members of the board and for you guys. I mean, I, I haven't heard any feedback at all, so I don't know if anyone's gotten any feedback, positive, negative. So I'd be curious to hear what that was, just because some of these other ones, we've had a lot of feedback early on in the process, good, bad, otherwise. I just feel like, at least personally, I haven't heard anything. So I'd like to know, like, if there are things that people don't like or are concerned about what those are, so we can at least address them.
And I would just say, the feedback I want to get is not whether people like the, the regulations or not. I'm not expecting people to like the regulations because it wasn't our idea. What I want to know is, do people agree that A, we should be complying with the regulations? And B, if we should be complying, are we going about it in the way that is most appropriate for the town in North Andover to do so?
So what have you, what have you heard, Peter?
Sort of, you know, you've got to be kidding me. Why do we have to, why do we have to meet these numbers? There's not even an MBTA. And so part of the answer was, well, there's also a requirement for adjacent communities. So that's why I asked you if the 14 meetings were specific to North Andover. And you know what? It's hard for people to, you know, keep track of all this stuff. It really is. But, you know, I think 14 meetings is a pretty good record. You know, that's, that's a lot of attempts at engagement.
And to be clear, not all of those meetings were, like, I would say four in particular were very focused towards the public. Others like this one are more directed to you all as a public board, and of course, the public invited to participate.
Public meeting.
They are a public meeting.
I understand the stat. So thank you. And the fact that there were four public-oriented meetings, that's good too.
So I think one of the things that I'm looking for help with from the board is, let's assume they were not going to get a lot of public comment before town meeting. What are the things that we should talk about at town meeting so that people understand? So is it some of the stuff, I mean, because we're not going to have an hour, right? I don't think Mr. Moderator would allow an hour to discuss this. So I think we'll have to pare it down to, okay, here's the state law, here's why we have to do it, here's what we can consider, what we can't consider, what we did. So I think I just need some help with trying to fit those things into what's most important for people to hear and understand.
Happy to help, but best of luck.
You know, it's on this slide here, but we do have a public-facing website. It's kind of a compendium of information. It does need a little more juice into it that I'll need to work on. So I want to get a more comprehensive FAQ portion of the site up there. We'll continue to post public meetings as they're recorded on the site. And so there will be an opportunity for people to look at this and provide feedback. And I'll, I'll make it, we'll, we'll put some information on there for people to submit public feedback.
Because I just feel like this is one of those where it could be like, nobody asks any questions and everybody just raises their hand. Or it could be a total free-for-all where there are a lot of questions and a lot of concern.
Two-part feedback that I got. It wasn't just why, it was, you know, why are we building this many units?
Right.
And, you know, we're not building zoning. And a lot of examples where you zone and nothing's built.
Okay. So I think those are the questions we're just going to have to be ready for, just to be able to explain. Okay. Did we receive any public comments as part of this public hearing? And is there any members of the public that wish to make any public comments? See, none here.
No public comments.
No public comments. Okay. So we will continue until March 12th. And yeah, I mean, to the extent that we can, I'm, I'll try to, if I can, somebody post this, if it's okay, post these slides. They're part of the agenda anyway. You know, on social media that people can at least start having conversations. So at least we can have some questions answered already or know what questions people are going to want to know answers to.
So just a housekeeping on the draft bylaw. I'm going to take the revisions to plan approval and move it to the end of the bylaw. Where it is today. Just housekeeping. The other open item is the parking of restaurants.
Yeah, I think, I mean, from what I saw, I think what you have, why don't you run with that and then we can talk about it next time. But I think that'll look good to me.
I'm going to submit it to the town manager's office for inclusion in the warrant at this point. It can still be revised throughout this process, but to at least get a placeholder in the warrant.
And we can, once this is in place, we can revise it as well, right? I mean, you know, if we want to add uses as we, you know, go about changing uses throughout town, we can revise it as we would any other bylaw, right?
The only...
We have to keep the...
You can even revise it after the warrant closes and goes to print.
I mean, like, two years from now, two years from now, we can, we have to keep the crux of the units and the density and stuff like that and remain compliant, but we can tweak as we would anything else.
That's the only unknown I would have is like, what, okay, are you, so even if you wanted to change something that had nothing to do with the housing component, are you still going through a process where you're, you know, consulting with the state? Like, are we, okay, we're still in compliance. We're, we're amending our MBTA communities compliant bylaw. We're doing this, that, and the other. Is that okay? We might still have to be a little careful, but I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that.
No, it, it goes for attorney general review and any bylaw amendment. And we get a bulletin back that they either approve it or don't approve it.
Exactly.
Okay. Great. So continue until March 12th.
Thank you.
Just realizing, that's my kid's birthday.
Okay, and the zoning map amendment?
Yeah.
I didn't bring it up, but it's very similar to any standard map amendment.
Yeah, we don't have to go through that. Changes the map to correspond to the zoning that's being proposed. Wonderful.
And so the map will look like that, whereas to locus callouts, and it's the zoning map in its entirety.
Okay, great.
And so I'll submit both of those to the manager's office.
Okay. Great. So let's do a potential citizen petition warrant article, James Warden, historic, historic barn overlay district.
I'm going to recuse. Thank you.
All right. So at the last meeting, you looked at really a pretty high-level outline. It's now been put into bylaw format. The associated zoning map amendment as well is provided in your meeting packet. And assuming this moves forward as a citizen petition, I've discussed a calendar with the petitioner, notice the article on next Monday and the following Monday, and a public hearing would open on March 12th.
If we wanted to make it a planning board article, how would we go about that and how would that change the timeline?
It wouldn't change the timeline. And anytime between now and, again, the warrant print, we could substitute the citizen petition with this planning board sponsor.
But does the citizen petition have to go forward, get the signatures and do all that first?
It's been withdrawn. It's been withdrawn in the past. Oh, no, it has to, assuming you're not going to agree tonight.
I don't think we have enough. Wow. I mean, I don't know if we have enough. I guess you need three, right?
I would like to go forward with the citizen petition noticing it.
Yeah.
Get the public hearing opening on the 12th so that you have an ability to hear it three times before having to make that decision.
Let's do it that way. Let's do it that way. I mean, I think there's a possibility that we do take it on. I think it's a strong possibility, but I think let's just do it that way. And that's generally how we've done it in the past, right?
I think it's cleanest.
Yeah, okay.
And again, I pointed out last meeting, once it gets submitted as citizen petition, it goes in the warrant exactly as written. So no opportunity to redline it between now and then. If you were to sponsor it, then it can have amendments made.
Okay. All right. So I lean towards we'll do that, but let's get it established first, okay? So what do we want to do here?
So, oh, James Warden, 84 Academy Road. So one, as we see this written up, one question we've heard from a couple of people now as we've continued to talk to neighbors of the public is there's a concern that it isn't clearly laid out that this has no effect on what a homeowner, property owner or resident can do on their property under R3, R1, whatever in the district, that this is something different. This is to do, basically to have a non-owner or non-resident use that facility for these very limited purposes as, you know, for rent or lease. So the one question would be, does it make sense to somehow... So, the one question would be, does it make sense to somehow add a sentence somewhere, in purpose, or in definitions, or somewhere, that this has no effect, this article would have no effect on what a property owner or resident can do on their property by that?
195, 20.3, second sentence.
195, 23.
Related shipped onto line and zoning.
Within the Houstard Barn Overlay District, the standards are used to mention another provision of zoning by law governing the underlying district, which shall remain full of force, except for those sites undergoing proposed uses in accordance with Article 20. So unless you're using something in accordance with this, the underlying zoning applies.
Oh, okay.
That's good.
So it's in, this is in...
That's the purpose of that section.
So we tell those people that?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, now, that doesn't mean, let's just say you can't now run an auto repair shop out of your garage.
No.
Now, maybe you do it, and nobody calls you on it, and you can't. This doesn't change that. This doesn't allow for things, or disallow for things, that you may want to do.
Yeah.
Certainly doesn't allow for new things, but it doesn't change anything that you want to do that's already allowed by the underlying zoning.
Like someone, someone freaked out, that said, wait, I make pottery in my house, and I, and I sometimes ship it out to people. This sounds like I'll have to go get a special permit to do that, whereas I already do that. So they're thinking this would trump, like, overtake.
It doesn't trump it, it just doesn't mean that what you're doing, if what you're doing now is not actually allowed, it may fall under this, it may fall under something else, right? So if you're running a retail store out of your current barn, you're probably not allowed to do that anyway. Not, this, this might allow you a different opportunity to actually do it legally, but it doesn't change anything about the, about what you're allowed to do now.
So if a homeowner is doing something in their barn...
Yes.
That is currently allowed.
Yes.
They would not have to get a special permit to do the same thing because of this overlay district?
No.
That was the question.
No.
If it's currently allowed.
If it's currently, if it's currently actually allowed.
If it's currently allowed, we, we had that discussion.
Yes.
If it's currently allowed.
Right, because, because, again, so that's what the purpose of an overlay district is, rather than changing the zoning in an individual district. If we change the zoning of the district, and say, these are permitted uses, and if you're going to be doing this, that could change it, because there's not, like, grandfathering for, like, that type of use. But where this is an overlay district, you choose either to apply for something under this district, or you do something under the allowed zoning. So, if someone were to build something here, you can choose, okay, I'm doing something under the zoning that's allowed, or I'm doing it under this zoning. So, no, it doesn't change the uses that are currently allowed.
So that's what 195, 20.3 covers, that wording?
Yes, I mean, it's, even if we didn't say that sentence, it would still be the same answer, but that sentence is in there.
So then, so then that's good.
For clarity.
Yeah. So, Gina, clarification question about this going forward as planning board versus citizens petition. If, if this is submitted with signatures to the town clerk, then it's a citizen's petition, and no red lines allowed?
Correct.
So, how do we know whether or not we should submit it with signatures to the town clerk, or if instead, it's going to go through the planning board?
You submit it, and then potentially, you may withdraw it, if the planning board agrees to sponsor it.
Okay.
Well, so the planning board wouldn't, wouldn't agree to sponsor it tonight?
I mean, we could take a vote on it, I'm hesitant to do that for two reasons. One, I think John has a lot, isn't here, and has a lot of knowledge about this particular area, and about particular unforeseen consequences, and I don't love voting with three people. Two, generally, the way these things go is they start as citizen petitions, and then through the hearing process, we decide whether or not to take it up. So I, that's what we've done in the past, is that we've taken it up after we've had the public hearings, because I don't know that I want to take it up as a planning board-sponsored article, and then, again, I don't think this is likely, to have a public outcry during public hearings, and be like, why did you take this up as a planning board? This isn't your prerogative, this is one person who wants to do this, and we all hate it, why are you doing this? So I think I'd rather let the process play out a little bit more. Submit it as a citizen petition, go through the zoning hearings, we get to early April, everyone seems to like it, planning board likes it, public likes it, then we can take, hey, this does have public good and benefit, that we've already now discussed at public hearings, and hearing that, we think that it's a good idea to take this as a planning board article.
You wouldn't adopt it till all the way through the three meetings, and April comes, and then...
Along those lines, sometime in that process.
So, with that in mind, Gene, can you just clarify what the timing is for James for getting the signatures and submitting it to the town clerk?
So, preferably Thursday by noon, we talked about, because that's the deadline at the Eagle Tribune, to get the notice to them, to print it on Monday. And if we don't do that, we don't meet the March 12th date.
Right.
So take, so what I would say is that, take whatever we go through today, and have it, and have as the best, most recent, up-to-date draft, and go get your signatures tomorrow. And then submit them on Thursday.
And amendments, if it were to go to town meeting as a citizen petition, amendments could be still made on the floor, if it were to get to that point, but I don't see it going in half, to be honest.
And I don't know, I don't know the rules about, check with the town clerk if the signatures have to be from people from certain voting districts or anything, I don't know the rules.
They just have to be registered voters, and she's going to have to certify those.
So if you need 10, get 20, you know? And, and, and try to get people that are not necessarily involved with the...
Whoever signs that form first, the first signature on your form becomes the petitioner. So if you want to be the petitioner, make sure you sign it first.
So, I have a question, more of just a, actually, it's a silly question. How do you, how do you determine whether a barn's 50 years old? Like, how do we, how does one determine that? Does someone just say, this is more than 50 years old? Like, is it something that the town assessor is assessing barns?
I think you would have to provide some sort of evidence to the building inspector, and the building inspector would have to sign off on it, or someone would have to sign off, you'd have to provide some sort of evidence.
So hopefully, there's an assessor records, showing the structure. They do assess structures and, oh, buildings' accessories. And then, and then the requirement is for the historic commission to actually write a letter to you as part of the application material, where they're certifying it meets the definition of a historic barn, which is 50 years.
Got it.
I think you just called John Simons, and said, hey, John, do you remember that?
Yeah, yeah, you remember this barn?
Right.
Will that count?
Honestly, I don't think there's a one set way that you have to do it, right? Assessing records would be one way, but seriously, if you had a picture from 1974 of a barn, then you have a 50-year-old barn. You have, I mean, there are other ways to, you can have your grandmother, you know, I remember when that barn was built, I mean, there are other ways to do it, assessing records are probably the best, but there are other ways.
It could be something at the registry that references.
A deed reference, a, a article in the newspaper, I mean, there, there, you can be, I'm sure you can be creative. So, okay, all right, let's continue to just go through, just see. All right, so just, guys, on the definitions, on the definitions, we, we kind of tweaked it a little bit, design, prototyping, limited office. It had been, one of the concerns I had when originally reading it, was that it was both too narrow and too broad at the same time. So I think, I think we just want to really just kind of focus on what the ideas are, and then, when it comes to a specific actual project, we'll deal with it in the special permit phase. Like, there's been some talk about, like, consulting, or for public policy, and I don't think it needs to be that granular, because then, if you get that granular, that excludes other things, so I like the way it's written now better.
That's cleaner, yeah.
Okay, so just for everyone's permitted usage, storage and transportation of vehicles, design and prototyping of a model or mock-up, computer or software design, or private office, artist studio, that's really what it's kind of limited to, but I think that's broad enough to, you know, to allow for things that we would want. And then if it was something, right, design and prototyping a model or mock-up could be anything, right? That could be anything from your boat, to firearms, to engineering equipment, right? Some of that might be appropriate, some of it not, but I don't think we can list everything that's good or bad.
Yeah.
I think we have to rely on the special permit process.
Yeah.
The one thing we tried to, early on, to limit that, was to say dry mechanical.
Right.
But I see that that's been taken out.
Yeah, again, that, I, I still don't exactly know what that entails and doesn't entail, and I think I'd rather leave it, again, if you get, if you get too specific, then there might be a really great idea that you'd say, oh, no, I can't do, because it's not in the bylaw. So I'd rather be more general, and just say, hey, if it comes to us, and now you're doing something, and again, we have some good language about nuisances, and things that, you know, if you're building, again, you know, we'd have to know, how are you building this, what are you building? Is it dangerous, is it not dangerous, how is it stored, all that kind of stuff? And if we get the right answers, then maybe one thing would be right in one circumstance, but not right in another circumstance.
I think we're covered there, because we said, no fumes.
Right.
So that's one way to limit it without saying dry mechanical.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and there's regulations of noise, and health, and all that stuff, so I think, I think we're pretty good. I mean, it's going to have to be, whatever's done there is going to have to be really based on this, small, and unobtrusive, so. I think that's there, I just, what we had before, like, I, I appreciate the effort to try to make it specific, but in its specificity, it overshot a little bit.
I think, eight on the other uses provision, kind of works as a catch-all for something that may cleanly fall under design and prototype, but is...
Is similar, right, exactly. Okay, so I think this is good, I think it makes sense for the area. I think it's, to the best we can, limiting effects that we're not aware of. So I think, I think your next step is to go gather your signatures.
Great.
And so I've called it Article 20, because the proposed MBTA is Article 19, so I might have...
Is Article 19, and the zoning bylaw, and the map, all 19, is it, both 19, or is the...
Those are just warrant article numbers, the map doesn't go in the bylaw itself.
Oh, okay.
As a, as a section.
Okay, got it. Okay, okay, so, yeah, that's fine.
Worst case, 19 becomes reserved in the bylaw.
So, Gene, in order to have this in the right format to submit for the signatures, we went to the town clerk, she gave it to us, but can we just use this version with the changes accepted, and insert it? We don't need something else from you, is that right?
We don't need anything from you.
Okay.
I believe you have this in a Word ver, I sent it in Word, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's what I sent you, so we have...
Just make sure you're working off the latest version.
Correct.
Okay. All right, I think it's come a long way, looks pretty good, so, you have a busy day tomorrow. All right, all right.
So, excuse me, but on the, so the map amendment?
Yeah.
This time, rather than putting to the zoning map, I'm pointing to the original 1987 Old Center Historic District zoning map,
Yeah.
which has these squiggly lines identifying the border.
And is that...
And the, but, the amendment is saying, make the zoning bylaw include this as an overlay district.
Is that map somewhere in our zoning bylaw now?
It's...
I'm just wondering...
It's not in the zoning bylaw, their, their provision is in the town bylaw or the charter, that references the Old Center, they're not a zoning...
Okay, so I'm just wondering if we should represent, reference, this is a question, should we reference the map, or should we reference a, I guess it's probably better just to actually reference the map than reference a bylaw, or charter, or something like that, that could change.
Yeah, so this is saying amend the zoning map according to that plan.
Okay.
To identify it as an overlay.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I think that works.
And so you need to submit both of these?
Yeah.
You know that, right?
Oh, together.
It's two different articles, so you're going to submit two different citizen petitions?
Didn't know that.
So you need, so when you get a signature, get them to sign twice, one for each?
Was this 21, or 20B?
It's not, it's not a section in the bylaw, it's just updating the zoning map.
So it's, it's just the map is separate in a second citizen petition?
Right, so you have one petition to enact a new zoning, and you have one petition to amend the zoning map in accordance with the bylaw. So it's two articles, that's how we always do it, two articles, one to enact the zoning, one to make, change the map, so that changes the zoning map. So basically, you need two warrant articles with two signature lists, and just have them sign, have people sign twice. It, it, it does the same thing, but it's technically two different articles.
The zoning map is made part of the zoning bylaw in general, under a different provision, and so it's just two different articles.
So, Gene, does that zoning map actually indicate the historic barns within the district? I was curious.
The actual barns?
Yeah.
If you actually zoom in on here, you'll see that line goes pretty much right behind any, it hugs the structure. It doesn't go to the back property line.
Oh, okay.
It, it hugs the back of the structure. So, in, in the language I included, if it splits the structure, the structure's included in the zoning map, because some places it gets really tight.
So again, this is another...
So you can see here, where the crosser is, that's running right at the edge of the back barn there. And so I just included language that says, if it splits it, huh, it's considered in it.
Again, this is another place you go for evidence.
Yeah, yeah, true, yeah.
Okay, look, so I know as of 1997, there was this on this map, right? And then you can go back further than there.
Yep, yep.
And this is the property...
Just a way to keep going back.
That these guys have been talking about, so that's the Kittredge Farm, barn.
Got it.
And it hugs that barn. That property itself goes all the way down to Pleasant and Stevens Street, it's a huge fossil.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Good.
Tomorrow we'll be busy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm going to rejoin, if that's all right?
That would be lovely. All right, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Seven minutes?
Oh, we did, already, we did it already.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did we hear from John?